End your comments by stating and spelling your name and providing your city of residence. We're going to adjourn to closed session for discussion of the following. Can you indicate, Mr. Mondeau, what we're going to discuss for the public?
Yes, I'll begin.
It's conference with legal counsel anticipated with an inch. You tell me where to pick it up. Go ahead.
Go ahead.
Now, just to clarify, significant exposure from that. The litigation for some government case, section 549, 56, point 9, two or three, one case, March R.C.A. versus City of Tulare, Workman's Comp case. We will adjourn.
We're all set.
We're set.
Yes.
From closed session, we do not have anything to report from our closed session. So as a result, we will now adjourn the closed session. That being said, at seven o'clock, with the desire to keep things moving, right, Mr. Mondale?
Yes, sir.
We will call the regular meeting to order at seven o'clock. I believe the Pledge of Allegiance and Mr. Isherwood will ask for a moment of silence in lieu of our indication. If everyone would please rise. Ready?
Yes, sir.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Mr. Isherwood?
Ladies and gentlemen, if you would please join me in a moment of silence. And one is a recognition of the passing of Priscilla Musgrove. Priscilla was very active in the community and a very lively and energetic individual. From Tulare, had ran for office herself in the past, but specifically involved in youth groups, adult and women leadership mentoring, and was retired from the Department of Corrections. But we, City of Tulare, lost a very lively soul. And if you'll join me in the moment of silence, please. Thank you.
Please be seated. Just prior to the meeting, I was notified that John Etzel Carter will not be giving her report tonight. She's at her mother's 77th birthday, Mother Carol Stella. So on behalf of City of Tulare, everybody's watching, and her family, I'd like to wish John Etzel's mother a very happy birthday. We will now move on to Proclamations of Recognitions. It's my understanding that Police Chief West, former police chief, can I call him Police Chief, Fred? It's up to you.
Please.
You've got the title, you know, so. Anything. West, would you please come forward?
Answer to anything.
That's Jake.
That's Laura.
Yeah, Laura, when he's looking for answers too.
Yeah, that's right.
Well, I don't know if this is the last time we will be doing this, but you've had several of these. At your last luncheon, we didn't have this, and that was probably my fault, but we have it now. And this is in recognition of all your years of service as it relates to and dedication to the City of Tulare. There were some rough times, we all know that, but there were lots of good times. And you and your force found a way through all of that. And as I've said many times, it was your ability to retire on your own terms, and that was a wonderful thing. And on behalf of the City of Tulare, I have this plaque for you that I'll read as soon as I give everyone an opportunity, the other counsel, to say something. Mr. Mondale, let's go on down the line.
Sure, thank you so much, Mr. Monroe. West, it was great working with you for the eight months or so that you were here while I came on board and helped me to understand the City of Tulare and the Police Department. Really appreciate all that you've done, especially in terms of getting your staff ready for the challenge and absence. And so we are really happy that we are able to promote from within. And so, you know, I'm going to call on you again. I have some things in mind that I'd like you to consider. So I know you're going to travel and everything else, but I'll reach out to you soon. So thank you so much.
Absolutely.
Steve?
Well, I've been waiting for this. No, I had a pleasure to work with West for a number of years, and it was pure enjoyment, not only working with him, but I also got to be his travel agent for a period of time too, when he traveled across the country. It'd really be hard to say, put it in words, as to what I really feel and think about West. I think the best way to put it is, they're in the real, those dark times in City management should. Tuesday nights, my favorite TV program is NCIS with Leroy Jethro Gibbs. I gave up, I was more than willing to give up. Those Tuesday nights could be down here, stand right over there, and pour us Fereng and criticize the council. Stupid food they make, and prove this man off. I'm so glad that I had the opportunity to work with him.
Well, Chief, it's good to see you. And I still remember the day that I got the call about what had happened, you know, in terms of you being made over the city. And, you know, one of the proudest moments of me being on the city council for six years is working with other colleagues on the council and writing what I perceived and a lot of folks perceived being wrong. You know, adjusting what had occurred to you. I enjoyed working with you on the council and as a mayor, you know, working to make sure that our department, your department and its officers have resources in the community to say. And I had talks about different types of policing and doing things in the community. And I really appreciate having an open door policy. And so, like I said, I'm very proud of being part of that process and that group and the majority that made sure you came back. And as Mayor said, you retire on your own terms. And I really appreciate your leadership and, you know, your legacy continues. You know, the mentorship and support that you give your department and your captains and everyone in the police department is now demonstrated with, you know, Chief and Con. Now taking on that legacy, that leadership role as chief. So congratulations. I know you can hopefully get to retire and do more fun stuff and appreciate seeing you.
Going fishing tomorrow if anybody's got time.
Bye, Samara.
Hi, Chief, I'd like to thank you so much for all that you've said for the city and the courage that you've shown, the integrity that you've demonstrated. I just appreciate so much your Christian values and that, you know, tough job. You still had compassion and love for those that you serve. And it's been an honor to work with you, and I look forward to you attending co-ones meetings now.
Good girl. Let's try Isherwood.
Good evening, Chief Hensley, good to see you again. And I think as what's been stated is really appreciate your service, appreciate you answering the call. As I've heard the stories, you know, out there from, you know, calls that you answer, just really your service to the community and putting yourself out there. That is, I think, just the ultimate representation of what we need in public safety. And then, of course, your leadership as well. I think with it is I've always appreciated your straightforwardness, your character and integrity. But at the same time is, as was mentioned in situations that have happened, which it, you know, clearly doesn't define whole career. But the part is also, thank you for giving, thank you for standing up for what you believed in. And thank you for giving the chance for the public to rally on your side. As we saw in giving, you know, a couple thousand people on social media. And it gave the public a chance to, in the right way and the right fashion, to come out and support you. And I think with that is a shot and saw out there of that respect. And you took care of Tulare, and Tulare stepped forward to want to take care of you. And here we are today, and just with all of that, thank you for your service for the public, me and my family. Greatly appreciate it.
Thank you.
That's for Samara.
You know, Chief, we've been in some weird circumstances.
Yes, we did.
I just want to say, you know, thank you. It was a pleasure working with you. I'm glad you guys go out under, you know, terms of Priscilla, a lot of great prayers.
Thank you, sir, I appreciate it.
Finally, before we present you with this plaque, the person who succeeded to your position, I want to give him the opportunity to say a few words publicly. Right? That's you, Fred.
Thank you, Mayor. Wes, it's been, you know, a long journey and much appreciated, and learned so much from you. Not only did I leave you in good hands, but, you know, I found it in good hands too. There wasn't too many hiccups or transitions soon, and thank you for that. I hope you enjoy your retirement. I won't wake you up in the middle of the night, hopefully too often, but I will lead any, I'm sure, on the course, sure as time.
Outstanding.
Finally, with our deepest appreciation and honor of your dedication and years of loyal service, Wes Hensley, 1991 through 2022. A time to look back with admiration, a time to look forward with anticipation. Best wishes and congratulations on your retirement from the City of Tulare. Ladies and gentlemen, let's give Wes a nice round of applause. Michael, first of all, I'll give you this. I'll put it in here while you.
Mr. Mayor, can I just say one thing real quick?
Go ahead.
Say publicly, Wes, I wouldn't be here still if it wasn't for you and the tone of silence. And I thank you so much for your support.
Always, always. And we talked about, just briefly tonight, some of the downsides of this career. I can tell you that in retirement and always going forward, those won't be the things I think about. You know, those are the things that are foot away. What I'll always remember is the friends I made that are on the staff now and this amazing community. And I used to tell people at service clubs when I talked to them that Tulare is not like anywhere else I've ever been to. The support of the community for the things that are right is unbelievable, volunteerism, all those things. And I'm just such a privilege to get to be a part of that and to be that protector. And then, you know, Steve talked about my travel agent days, and there was a times in that the city spent a lot of money sending me all over the place to solve murder cases. And I learned a great deal in that. And I'm grateful that the city was always willing to spend that extra dime when it counted for the cases that counted. And that doesn't happen in every community either. So Tulare as a whole is a unique place. And I think everybody, when you're done with your service here, you will feel the way I do about it, for sure. It's just a love, I don't miss the work, but I'll always miss the people. And I'm only just a phone call away if you guys need me for something. Sound good? All right, love you guys.
You can save it for the meeting if you'd like. Save it.
I can, right? That's all the cool perks about retirement. We'll touch on later. Thank you, guys.
Okay, now we'll move on to citizens' comments. This is the time for... Everybody give me just a moment. In my days, I got to hook up, which I think I'm supposed to do. Is that right, Mr. Segal? Absolutely. He needs your mayor.
Mr. Mayor, if you'd like the city attorney to take over, I'm sure.
You might leave out things that you should. You wouldn't do that, I mean, I'm just gestating. Gestating. Am I in, gentlemen? Apologize. This is the time for citizens to comment on subject matters not on the agenda within the jurisdiction of the Tulare City Council. Council members ask that you keep your comments brief and positive. The council cannot legally discuss or take official action on citizens' request items that are introduced tonight. This is also the time for citizens to comment on items listed under the consent calendar or to request an item from the consent calendar with pull for discussion purposes. Comments related to public hearing of general business items will be heard at the time of the public hearing. The public hearing is open for comment or the general business items discussed. In fairness to all who wish to speak, each speaker will be allowed three minutes with a maximum time of 15 minutes per item, unless otherwise extended by council. Please begin your comments by stating your name and providing your city of residence. Do we have anybody that has called in? No one has called in? And while we take up the comments from the chamber, the chambers, the, if you wish to call in, the number's 559-366-2849. Anyone in the council chambers that wishes to give citizen a call? See, no one, and no one has called in, we will close citizen comments. Mr. Mondale, do we have any communications?
No communications.
Okay, we will move on to item number 12. Item number 12 is the consent calendar. We have eight items on a consent calendar, a council of which it pleures relates to consent calendar.
Sir, may your council like to request that item number eight be pulled for some questions?
Okay, item eight is pulled. Do we have a motion as it relates to items one through seven?
Salute.
We have a motion, we have a second, Mr. Segal will second it. All in favor, say aye. Aye. None opposed? Is that correct, council? The matter passes, the unanimous. Five zero. Item eight, Mr. Segal.
Mr. Mayor, council, this is, I'm glad to see this item on the agenda. It's a program that I've talked about over several, several years, about how important it is to our community, the best program that the city partners with, School District, to provide many children across our city with a safe place to do their homework, be watched, maybe do some activities, different types of things while their parents are out working. During that sort of time where, that opportune time when kids can get in trouble between 2:30 and 5:30. So obviously, we have a force as a contract. Interestingly enough, I think it's the first time that I've seen it. It's come to council every year, or? Right?
No, this is a grant that the city school district got. So there, in the past, the participants would pay us, but the school district actually is providing it for free. So because there is the revenue that's coming from the city school district, and it's an agreement, that's why it's brought to council this year.
Right, and like I said, this is the first time I've seen it, and I read it, obviously, and that was one of the questions I think kind of answered. Because I know that in the past, there's been parents, or parents of participants that paid semester fees, try to cover some of the costs. I know that the city borne other costs, right, to subsidize that program. So now it's entirely subsidized by the school district grant?
So in doing the findings and us doing all the budgetary background, it'd probably be subsidized about 87, 86%. In a normal year, the students or participants would pay about $300 per semester. This year, the school district is going to reimburse us $325 per kid, per semester. So we're looking at if we reach 800 kids, which we are getting there very quickly, and as school gets closer and closer, and we'll probably be at right about a bad limit, we're going to have about $520,000, just to the best club.
Right, and that was another question. I know that, as someone you may recall, I did the budget process, ARCA funds, I've been trying, kind of tried to see if we could help parents as COVID hit them, trying to get back to work, by maybe subsidizing their, you know, having kids watch while they were still at work, right? And so the question I had, and I think, just to clarify, you said it's up to 800?
Well, right now, we're about 740, 740. If you look at the agreement, agreement only allows us to have 800, 800 participants per semester. And the reason of that is because this year, the school district is also providing other after-school programs at those sites. So you take a site like Alpine Vista, which usually just have best club, now they'll have the heart program. So we did, we still have to set capacity limits because we still have to run a program on a 1 to 20 ratio. But if anybody is on our waiting list now, they actually get into a whole other program. So it's pretty much open to everybody that attends the school district.
Right, and the last question I had, I looked at in the agreement, there were only certain amount of schools that were selected. And is that because of the capacity? Because I, obviously, I didn't see Roosevelt in my district. And I know that, that there's a lot of kids that could benefit. And I was, of course, there's kids that could benefit across the whole city. But I just wanted to get an idea how the schools were selected.
So the eight that you see in the agreement are the original eight that we've had in the past. For instance, Roosevelt, Lincoln, Wilson, those have, those already have a free after-school program, and they already did, which is choices. So whether we were at Wilson or not, they would still have another, another program to go to, which is choices, which is still free. So.
Great, well, thank you very much for the answers, Mr. Mayor, council. Are there any more questions? Anyone else does have questions? And I would move to adopt item number eight.
Second. Mr. Segal made the motion, Mr. Harold second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Hearing none, the matter passes, five zero. We'll now move on to mayor council reports or items of interest. I'll start, start, just an update on Mincoia GSA, which I sent on. The plan amendment that the GSA had submitted to the water board has been timely modified and submitted. So we are moving forward as it relates to that. We're trying to have our plan approved. So for the future as we move forward. I am currently working with Tracy on the state of the city. Speech will be meeting regularly. I attended the Torres mural dedication on the 28th. And I have been working somewhat as a citizen more. But I do drop the mayor name a little bit on the fact that our DMV facilities, in my opinion, are woefully deficient. And I came to that conclusion. When I, when I drive by the DMV and I see 25 people waiting outside in a 105 degree weather, that, and then I found out that the facility itself is all of 4,000 square feet. I took a drive over to Visalia to see their standalone facility, and it was packed. And somebody told me there that they had an hour of wait. So the conclusion is that between Visalia and Tulare, my conclusion is that we need a bigger facility for our constituents. When our constituents have to wait outside in that kind of weather, it's dangerous, as far as I'm concerned. And it's the same type of thing works during the winter. They have to stand outside. That being said, the head of facilities I contacted, I, for DMV, I found out that someone has to, someone else has to give direction. So what I'd like to do is have a consensus from this council that, number one, I wanted to let everybody know what I was doing. Number two, I'd like council to give me consensus, I'm asking for that, to move forward and seek the help of Mr. Mondale, also with Tracy, to try to get this accomplished for the good of our community. Does anyone have any objection? No. Private leaseholder, wait. Well, for private leaseholder, his lease is up, which means at that point, he has no authority rights of anyone else. The question then is, before the lease is renewed in whatever fashion, will the private leaseholder give a bigger portion of the shopping center to accommodate? Or will there be other properties downtown that are suit our constituents? I think I say the city councilman, someone representing that facility in my district, I want to make sure that we have the best possible facility under the surface cases for... And it's not even just the city, it's our regional area for people who have gone into the department of motor vehicles, if they go into a facility that's proper. And that's, that's the direction.
You're proposing to send any type of letter on any type of issue appropriate to the DMV? Dennis will be the first to sign.
I'm not... Any letter will be approved by council, but I, I'm making phone calls. Okay? Good. Tracy, Mark, everybody's, you have to... Okay, that's it. Bye, Samara.
I also attended the Tulare Boxing Club mural unveiling. It was really a lovely event. And what was really heartwarming was this mural was of three generations of... It was really a lovely event and what was really heartwarming was this mural was of three generations of Torres family. That have done immeasurable, uh, good reviews of this city. And that was really, really, um, heartwarming to see that. And, uh, also I just want to tell, um, Chief how excited I am that Officer Boe was now captain. I think that's a wonderful thing, I can congratulate him on that. And the Chambers Union Ambassador Leadership Program started this last week. And I was really honored to do a leadership training for them, so that's, uh.
Well, Chief, one last thing you have to announce at the end of the meeting is the who the captain is. I think the vice mayor should care of that. So we'll move on to council member Sagala.
Mr. Mayor Council, a couple of things just wanted to, um, note, uh, like to request, well, I will be requesting later on in the evening, uh, an update from, uh, staff on the status of the playground on O.K. Park, as you may know, part of it burned down and sort of, uh, been stopped. And just wanted to see if, uh, we could get, or it could be a council item or it could be a report, just to see what the status is. I know the city manager put out something in terms of some potential cost and so forth, so he's wanting to give an update on that. Um, a couple of other things I wanted to, um, uh, to talk a little bit about my role as a chair of the new transit agency, uh, and where we're at. Uh, given a number of, well, now, it's now the Tulare County Regional Transit Agency is in charge of everything in the county, with the exception of the city myself. So we have Nuva, Lindsay, Porterville, uh, obviously Tulare that were in charge of county, uh, operation system. So as of July first, we pretty much now run the entire regional transit system. Uh, there, there's eight of us on the board in various cities in the county and, uh, and I have the honor to be the chair of that board. So one of the things that we're working on is, um, wanting that staff, I think Diego and I'm not sure Josh, still kind of deals with some of the transit issues. But we will be putting together a safety committee. Uh, the board approved a little bit of funding to address some of the safety issues. Uh, as some of you may know, one of our drivers was assaulted a couple of months ago, knocked out cold. Right here at our transit, uh, agency, there's been other safety issues with cameras and so forth. So we put together a committee with members, with the union and with the TransDapp, who is now the, uh, vendor who, uh, uh, operates the, the system. So I wanted to give you guys a heads up if there were any issues related to that. We're having our first meeting next Monday and I'll make sure I'll share that information to see if there's any ideas. Uh, because now we are, um, moving forward on, uh, trying to address and handle all of our transit centers. A couple of other things I wanted to just share that over the last, uh, month or so, our, the staff who's been working with those at the ADC has done a phenomenal job in securing a number of grants. One of those grants, uh, we were, yeah, we had a federal grant of three hundred and fifteen thousand dollars that are set, that allows us to provide more transit and more polished areas of the county. Uh, we got a one point nine million dollar grant just a couple of days ago, uh, to allow us to buy more, um, buses that are going to be zero emission in terms of, uh, that. And then, uh, we, about a month ago, we got a, uh, thirty-three point seven million dollar grant that is a grant between Tulare and Kings County. To begin to develop, uh, a system that would allow people from Porterville, from Terrabella, to get to the, uh, high-speed rail in, uh, in Hanford and then wherever else from there beyond. So it's going to be a great opportunity for folks. Oh, and then we also got a grant, uh, working with self-help enterprises, uh, in Farmersville to deal with, do a transit center. And then Lindsay is going to get a brand-new transit center, um, as well. So, um, there's a lot of great things happening through that agency. And I just wanted to thank the council because when this idea first came up with Ted Smalley, our city council was like the first one out there really pushing for this. And so it's an opportunity for us to provide some good transit service. And the last thing, um, to where, um, I will, uh, bring up a little bit more in detail at the end of the agenda. But, um, I had talked to Brian and, um, and I've talked to council member Harold about some ideas regarding the AYSO and the TYSL, where he's talking to me. Uh, as they're going to begin their operations, uh, or their, their games in a couple of weeks, about some concerns about public safety, about parking. And I did have a, a conversation with Brian, uh, today about, and I was trying to reach Jason, but I, I think he's on vacation. But the idea was to see what we could do to try to lessen, um, the issue. I think, uh, Brian mentioned it's about sixteen, seventeen hundred kids that are playing soccer between both leagues, which is great. But, uh, that creates a lot of parking issues, a lot of concerns. And so I kind of found some ideas off council member Harold and, and Brian about what the council may be able to do. So I think it'd be my more appropriate at the end of the meeting to give more detail, unless Brian wants to mention something.
I, I think that's, this is not the question, I think.
Yeah, but it's, like I said, it's an item of interest that I'll be talking about. But, but thank you.
Sure, sure. Yeah, attending the Torres mural dedication is a couple of council members, which was really a great event. And I think it's really great to, uh, promotion of the Tulare Athletic Club, as well as what they're doing in servicing Viningue, uh, Tulare. Their program has grown significantly, um, there. And then, of course, uh, met with, uh, many residents in the district, kind of putting together some traffic calling requests that have come from residents and, uh, appreciate the packet. Kind of the policies that we have, the administrative policies towards, um, uh, traffic calling measures and pilot projects. And looking forward to meeting with staff, Michael and the city manager on that proposal or something. Thank you, Mr. Harold.
Senator, the constituents are very, we face issues, uh, they were the problems, a lot of worries.
Very good. Thank you, sir. We'll now move on to item fourteen, general business. Comments related to general business items, and we have no public hearings tonight. Uh, we have four items on the general business calendar, uh, agenda. Comments related to general business items are limited to three minutes per speaker for a maximum of thirty minutes per item, unless otherwise extended by the council. Uh, after the presentation of each item, I will, uh, ask if anyone wishes to comment on those items. Uh, the first item is to review, discuss, and possibly update the term, term limits, residency requirements, minimum qualifications, and appointment process for the city boards, commissions, and committees. Uh, this is being submitted, submitted by our city clerk, Melissa Herman. Melissa, do you want to add anything to that?
Um, I can just, um, take questions if council has any. Um, the staff report was pretty thorough. But if you have any questions, I'm ready to answer.
Well, the background and explanation on this is set forth in, uh, in, uh, the agenda transmetal sheet. I think everybody's had the opportunity to, uh, take a look at our eighth city of Tulare board. Some of these are not, um, items of, that we really need to discuss. And I think if we eliminate those, we can move through these very quickly. The first is, uh, the board of public utilities, which is governed by the charter. The, uh, library board is governed by the education code. Uh, parks and recreation commission is appointed by council seat. The, uh, the planning commission is also appointed by council seat. The, uh, the police department citizens complaint review board is, uh, appointed by five council seats and two appointed at large. Uh, and that's under the municipal code. Does anyone have any objection to, uh, those? Those five? Now, seeing none, that leaves us with the aviation commit, committee, which, uh, I think what we've had in the past on the aviation committee is a system that hasn't been followed, but it, to the extent that it had one appointment by the mayor as council rep, uh, one by the planning commission, one airport leaseholder, and two additional members that would be appointed by council. Does anyone have any, and, and, and I think by and large, we're seeking applications for the aviation committee. Is that right? Melissa?
Yeah, we, we.
People are pounding on that.
No, we seek applications all year round, uh, but we don't get a whole lot for that, uh, aviation.
Yeah, and maybe to make this simpler, if council, uh, finds this acceptable, is to just seek applications and, and, uh, appointment by council itself. Do I have any suggestions as to what I could say to that?
I, I had one question, um, I think I had read, maybe I misread it, but were there any, are any of the members, uh, supposed to have some kind of special sort of background? Uh, as beyond, beyond the, you know, insert or, are there any, like, technical requirements?
So this item includes more than just the appointment process. I know that's what council, uh, requested us to bring back, but we looked at additional, um, information, which included residency requirements, term limits, and minimum qualifications. Right now, um, we don't require any minimum qualifications, uh, being as they, we don't require them to have any aviation experience or a leaseholder. I mean, uh, we do if we followed it, but we haven't been following, uh, what was adopted in nineteen seventy-two.
But, but there is kind of a listing, I think I had read it and I don't know if I misread it, but you, there, there was some sort of, like, specialty. Kind of like you come from this industry, we come from this background. Is that, is that in the aviation committee? Beyond what's just listed here? Like, uh, uh, someone that's a leaseholder, doesn't require someone to be a pilotated or any of that stuff?
Yeah, if we're going by what was, um, adopted in nineteen seventy-two, which it hasn't been updated or changed since then, um, it would be, it would require one number to be airport leaseholder.
Because I, I think the suggestion would be that we revisit that and then if, if it doesn't work and we haven't followed it, then just update it. So it could be just, some of them may have some, because the airport is, is a special place. I mean, not too many could use that, you know, airport like we have in the sense. And maybe we look at if someone does have that kind of special background. But again, we run into the problem that we have to find someone that fits that criteria, so.
I believe currently on that committee, there are members that are actually leaseholders from here. I don't know if that wasn't a requirement when they applied, but that could run their interest to applying for that committee.
Yes, ma'am, the, the current membership of the aviation committee is almost entirely comprised of aviators currently. That's what we've seen, showing interest on that particular committee.
And that's for a purpose. I, it's because they have a good working knowledge as to what's going on out there, what they can recommend to council, what they can recommend to staff. Is that fair to say?
Certainly, and very much a best interest.
Which is what we want by and large from the aviation committee. And I don't know if, if council wishes to just take applications and then review them and approve who's on? Or, uh, do, you know, it's council's pleasure or have an appointment process and then confirmation, um, whatever you want. I mean, I don't, when we're having trouble getting people to sit on the aviation committee, you know, that's not term limits. I don't see term limits as a issue here, you know, public pressure. Patrick?
No, I, I agree with what you're saying. I think that it's one appointment by mayor, uh, one on the planning commissioner, airport leaseholder. Uh, I, I don't necessarily know that it says it has to be limited to one airport leaseholder. It's a minimum of at least one, but I'm, I'm open that it's just applications that come to the council or also applications that the mayor makes the appointment control. So maybe something in the policy that says it's a, applications and appointment by council, but also it could be done by the mayor too. Maybe one can't happen and allows a little bit more of the, of the other, whatever is available to expedite.
Vice mayor. Mr. Harold.
Yes, I brought this up originally, uh, initially regarding term limits and residency requirements. But also I want to see this streamlined process because you have a appointment by mayor, or by council, or by individual council members. Not all we need to try to coordinate this and have this streamlined, you get it done instead of kind of bouncing around all the exceptions. And I agree, we have a difficult time applying for positions.
Well, we have, we have some that differ, but because of necessity. I mean, the charter provides that the board, board of public utilities is appointed by mayor with confirmation by council. The library board requires an appointment by the mayor with confirmation by the council. So if we're going to streamline this, that means all of them in that same way. I mean, by necessity, I, I don't think any of us want the planning commission to be by anything other than appointment by a council seat, which I think you are in that for, is that correct? Yep, Mr. Sagala. And, uh, uh, the same way with the police department citizens complaint review board, uh, that, that's under the municipal code and that's somewhat different. But it is appointed by the, uh, council seat. Some, straightlining, uh, sounds good, but we have certain situations to where, uh, to appoint, for instance, to appoint by council's history for the aviation committee is just not our work. How many, that means you've got to go find someone who has pilot's license, fly, and flies and has, uh, tangible contact in your district, Mr. Sagala. You have to do that by, now, sometimes that's just not feasible. We have to seek these people out. So by necessity, we're going to have differences.
I, I think what Steve, it's, it's going against those common statements, with that, perhaps with that three, then maybe three appointment by mayor, run by planning commission. And one, as I understand, a minimum of one making airport leaseholder.
On the aviation, are you ready?
Right, I, I would agree because I think this is one of those unique ones. I know the last time we talked about this, we ran out of time, but the, the council, in my recollection, was willing to try to develop a uniformity in terms of how people got appointed. And obviously we noted that charter dealt with the BPU and that the, uh, education board dealt with, uh, the library board or education code. And that's why I think we ended up with almost every other one appointed by council seat. And so, um, when we, when aviation, we talked about aviation because it was that specialty. It's a unique commission, it has a unique, obviously, you know, specific thing that it does. Uh, I'm open to that, you know, in terms of maybe, uh, having a council rep appointed by mayor. The way I read it is actual planning commission, one planning commission that they will survive. And then if we wanted to, the, the remaining bounds, the three that the, we could recommend, or the mayor with one of them at least being a stated leaseholder. I'm okay with that one when it comes to aviation. The, uh, committee on aging, which I think would.
I'm staying with, I'll treat the aviation.
Sure, that, that, I would support, uh, uh, maybe Mr. Rishu wouldn't get correct or wrong, but I think you're going in that kind of direction where we keep the first two and then the three, the mayor with a point. With council confirmation, one of them at least being a leaseholder.
Well, we would have three appointed by the mayor.
Right.
Confirmed by council, one planning commissioner, uh, that the planning commission itself would, uh, would, uh.
Decide.
Decide. And the last would be an airport leaseholder that the council would approve.
That's what I understand it.
Yeah, I mean, somebody's got to say that person qualifies. So, so that would in essence be, uh, four coming from this council for approval and one coming directly from the planning commission. That sound appropriate?
Like, just real quick, uh, how many actual leaseholders are there in your, does it include, or? How many would you guys estimate? Over thirty? Over thirty leaseholders, over thirty. So there would be a pool of folks in this.
Please, please do remember though, council, that the, being a leaseholder does not mean that you are a resident of Tulare. We certainly have folks from other communities, uh, wanting to lease our spaces as well.
Well, uh, I think I would be supportive of, uh, that first, uh, as the mayor laid out, and council member Rishu was talked about too. In this particular, uh, com- committee, be that with the council directions, yes. To rebound, but we shuffle whatever proper process is for the aviation.
Along those lines?
Yes.
So, so, uh, the mayor will appoint three, planning commission will designate a member, and, uh, the, do, do they, do the leaseholders have any kind of group that they need on to discuss?
But the aviation committee, uh, typically serves as that group.
Staff will deal with, uh, that can be done on, right? Staff can deal with the leaseholders and try to find someone who's willing to sit on the aviation committee. We can do that. Subject to approval, and then. Subject to approval and then their application would be approved by two thousand. You can do that, right? Melissa? Now, these are new rules?
Yes, so this would be moving forward once we have vacancies, uh, in that block.
Yes. We had a consensus, council? Okay, so we've got the aviation committee, the Board of Public Utilities, the Committee on Aging. Basically, we get, uh, what's your pleasure first? Anybody have any particular ideas? I mean, we could just get applications and then once the applications are, yeah, it's fine.
I did find the rules and procedures for this, um, committee after I had submitted this. Um, and it does say the appointment process is this city of military commission on aging shall consist of seven members who shall be appointed by the mayor with the approval of the city council. All commissioners shall be residents. That was, that's how it was adopted in eighteen seventy two.
If, if that's the case, Mr. Mayor, council, I would, if, if there are seven, right, or potential, did you say five or seven?
In nineteen seventy two, it was seven, but we're down to five.
Down to five, well, well then that's the case. I mean, I would just keep uniform and do by council appointment. So, or council seat appointment, as we've done other ones. And I think what, what happened with the planning commission, uh, staff came up, I think Roxanne came up and we all pulled a number out of a hat and that was for our commissioner. And then as they finished their term, we decided whether to continue. So that, that would be to keep it uniformity because then everyone else is by council seat. So that'd be the recommendation.
So all five of us will find one person to be on the committee for aging? Is that what you're saying?
Yes.
One?
Yes, and I think initially there was a lottery to see who, what seat you picked and that would be your appointment. That was a, for example, I know later generally we have vacancy for that commission, right? That if, uh, that was your particular, you pulled that one off out of the hat and that was your appointment. And then if I picked someone that just got on and their term was up in four years and at that point, so I think that's the process that needs to last time for the planning.
Do we have consensus? I see a puzzle welcome as for choice.
I, I get the pass. I think that, that part of it is saying, take it down to five. And if I understand that, it's, it's not necessarily that we have to go out and find someone in their district, but you can go to, whenever there's a pool of applicants and there's a vacancy with people, whatever district per se has the vacancy, then select or present someone.
Well, I think it'd be both. So for example, when you.
You could go on.
Yeah, I mean, I ideally would want to find someone in my council district to serve on it, but if there was another person on the inside of town that I then would equate on that committee. It's not by district. That was the big difference we did last time. So this is by council seat. So basically you can appoint someone that lives on the west side, I can appoint someone that lives on the east side. They don't necessarily have to be by district. That's the difference between by council district or by council seat.
So this will be similar to measure high?
Well, yeah, by council seat that we all appoint.
Well, that's what measure high.
Right, and the rest.
Do we have a consensus on that?
Yes.
Okay, let's, uh, library board is by the education code. Parks and Recreation is appointed by council seat, planning commission by council seat. Uh, Police Department Citizens Review Board, seven in municipal code, uh, five by a council seat, and two appointed at large. Fine? Very good. Mr. Ishu? Vice Mayor? The terms are governed, for instance, by the library board is three years under the education code. The Police Department Citizens Complaint Review Board is two years, is that right, Melissa?
That's correct.
We want that to change for uniformity to four years? Central? Or leave it at two years? I don't have a. Recommendation, Chief?
I think you should continue on to just for.
Very good. Councils? We'll leave that at two. Term limits? It's interesting, we're talking about term limits at the same time while we're talking about difficulty in finding people to serve. My general attitude is we don't go down that road. Because we do have, we lose experience, we lose, uh, people who are dedicated to serve and get back. Vice Mayor?
I think that's true, but I think after fifteen years or twenty years, there's probably a need for some blood.
So, uh.
You know, I think that's a long time to serve on a planning mission or a Board of Public Utilities.
So what do you, what do you propose?
Some kind of term limit that everybody can agree on.
Let's get other input.
Yeah.
When I was appointed to redevelopment in two thousand and one, I, the members of that board had actually been on there longer than I could have alive. But it was great and it was awesome. And, and it did bring a lot of that rich history and experience. I, I'm open to council's discussion, but Mr. Mayor, I don't have an issue to push in, in your, in your.
Mr. Sagala?
I think, uh, on one hand, I think, uh, most of these, if not, well, most of them, uh, that are by council seat, that, that is some kind of term in terms of we as a council can decide after two years or four years whether that person should continue on the commission. So that's kind of a form of a term limit. But I think the two most active and the two most powerful and the two most influential committees and commission in our city are both BPU and plan. They have such, uh, they have the opportunity to really shape a lot of things in our city. And those two are by charter, right? One's by charter and the other one is, 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 um, also we appoint by council seat. So I think the planning commission, um, has that kind of de facto term limit. But the BPU, I'm not sure if Mary Margaret Canaster, if, if in the city charter itself, we, we would have to make the charter change in order to put limits on, term limits on the BPU. That required of both of.
Injection.
Okay. So, because that would be my one thing. I mean, I'd be open to, to that and, uh, like I said, the rest of them are by council seat. The only one in the PPU would be the one that, uh, I'd be open to term limits, but again, I don't know if we have to go to.
Well, we always have the ability not to reappoint in their terms. That's a, that's a council decision that can be made at any time. And I don't know, I've read the charter, there's nothing in there that has term limits. I think we're going to find the city attorney, city attorney, but I think we're going to find that we have to amend the charter to put in term limits. I'm sorry, Mr. Sagala.
Vice Mayor, the previous state of providers committee, well, we have some commissions and boards where we have in twenty, twenty-five years, that Mr. Ishu stated, that is a lot of experience and certain official. But at the same time, we have a responsibility to try to encourage younger people to start getting involved with governments. Look up on this diocese, look at it, start adding up the age up here. There's a lot of years up here. Couple of people, but, uh, if you've got somebody that's been here for twenty-five years, I'd say as long as they're here, fine. But if news coming on, there would be term limits exposed. I'm not saying taking anybody off the committee that's been here. When new ones come on, have to encourage younger people to get involved in that. The way to start is being on commissions and boards. And some of them, some that I have recruited for different things have said, well, this person's been there for fifteen years, this person's been there for twenty years, so why should I even try?
Well, isn't it up to the council that exists at that time to impose a term limit? With that argument that they're not going to reappoint somebody, uh, to that position? And let the younger people come in? That's the duty of the city council itself to take that step. By, by us imposing that through a code change or whatever it may be, making it mandatory, you're tying the hands of this council and future councils to not even use discretion to keep somebody with, uh, with knowledge and, uh, doing a good job that you may want to keep. That's what, that's what I had to trouble. I think it's the duty of the city council itself to make sure that if there's someone qualified, a younger, and, and you have, you have an individual that's been there a long time and they, they just don't want to let go, then it's the duty of the city council itself to take that step to see to it that occur.
Good. I think we've already experienced that once already, once we've been anywhere. Long time, remember, would, food, someone else would put on. It's kind of a slap of the face to these officials. I don't like that at all. By establishing the term limits, established up there for this council, the council that follows us, the one that followed this, is there? I mean, uh, if it was up to me, I would establish term limits for setting up here. Everybody should have term limits, you're likely to have term limits. I think we're the only city in this area that's not doing term limits. But I'm not saying we should do it just because they are.
Well, obviously we take a charter amendment to put term limits on council. I mean, I, I can point to your previous, uh, city council members who've served a long time. And the only reason they served a long time is because their constituents wanted them to serve a long time. And, and what we end up doing is we have council members who serve by district in other parks of the cities dictating to that district. They can't elect somebody who, uh, represents them under the service. And I don't think that's appropriate. Who's going to fess up? Where does that come from? Well, perhaps everybody's pointing to this. Uh, I think that we have to do a charter amendment.
You would, for the, for the Board of Public Utilities, it is silent, but it, even if the council were to ask for resolution, I think we would be in conflict with how the language is in the charter of the four years, uh, term, which is obviously different than a term limit. But again, there'd be a reappointment for the council, so the council's making that decision at that time. But also, you know, it, it, it's different when you're talking about a, an appointed, uh, person because they can be removed, uh, instead of an elected person. You know, that, that's the part of the reason I have a term limit is it cannot be removed. And so these appointed positions, uh, you could do a, an amendment and have a term limit for these appointed positions. Uh, but the, the flexibility that you have already, um, kind of, kind of, you know, is, is in contradiction to that, so.
Well, we have circumstances in which, uh, we make a decision as council not to reappoint somebody. That does cost hard feelings, but when people don't get elected, that costs us hard feelings. And sometimes we just have to make tough decisions. But making a, a term limit takes away the ability of a particular constituency or a particular, uh, city council to make decisions that they feel in their discretion is in the best interest of the city. So I'm not a client. But I want counsel.
Well, can I ask a question? Um, but I'm not sure of the answer. So when it's time, if a person has four years on the BPU, they come out to be reappointed, they ask to be reappointed. And there are three or four applicants that want to be on BPU that may be, you know, aged, whatever. Um, at that point, can the person asking to be reappointed, can everybody just put in another application? And then, I don't know. I mean, it just seems like there'd be a way to make it more feasible and equitable and not hurt people's feelings. Either your four years are up and you reapply again with other applicants.
That's how it's meant.
No, they just came in here and said, I want to be on it again, and we said, okay.
No, it was, it was, no, my understanding was it was noticed that there was a vacant seat and they were willing to serve again. And, and oftentimes, oftentimes the mayor will seek someone to serve that in for that appointment. Because it's a mayor's appointment, the mayor will seek someone for that position. And that's subject to approval. So, uh, for instance, if the mayor has, has, uh, it's my understanding of the way that it works, if the mayor has no one in particular for that appointment to Board of Public Utilities, then, then the mayor at that point should go to the city clerk and say advertise for all applications. But if the mayor finds someone that, that, that individual, you know, she decides it's, uh, a good fit for Board of Public Utilities, then the mayor makes that. And there were some that initially were appointed in that fashion. Can you add a question? Mr. Ishu?
I know serving on, on boards, I've seen a little bit of both, but in my cases, I know I was either petitioned that I had to formally request either by email or that to be reappointed. I do remember at times, uh, I came here at the council and had to present to council as well for that appointment. Um, I, I think that that is the process that each time somebody wants to be reappointed, though they do have to confirm or do that affirmation and it goes before council, uh, with that. And I, and I support that too, is that you think that that should happen. There should be a request and they should have to formally do that and council should take formal action. I, overall, I agree with what the mayor's saying is that there, there's been a lot of stories over the years, but that process is there and that is a process council.
I think what I'm hearing, I think I joined the majority in, I mean, I don't support the term limits. I still believe that as a council seat appointment, the council member, whoever that may be, has either to find someone else or, or thank that person for their service. So I, I don't think, the only one, like I said, I would be interested in would be the PPU, but that seems to be a lot more, a bigger part of the council.
And we can deal with that when they're term limits.
Right.
Uh, anything else, Mr. Harold?
No.
We don't have to take any action. Uh, I, I sense a consensus not to impose term limits unless anyone wants to make a motion. Hearing that, we'll move on to, uh, residency requirements. Council some time ago, uh, and probably, uh, Mr. Sagala, this may have happened just as the vice mayor and I were coming on. No, we were already here. This was changed in December of nineteen. I have no memory. I don't know that we need to change that. Is there anyone in particular that creates a problem, Melissa?
Recently, we had, um, an applicant who is not located within the city limits, who wanted to, um, serve on the planning commission, wanted to be considered to serve on the planning commission, but he's just outside the city limits, so this would have affected him. And then we did have two rooms available from the Police Department Citizens Complaint Report because he was outside the city limits as well.
I have had two, uh, two people that have contacted me about this issue. That they're just outside the city limits and feel like they, they're very involved in the city, uh, both in services as well as their businesses, and yet, uh, they're not able to apply for any boards because of that restriction.
And your opinion on that?
Yeah, I, I mean, I think in this case, those two people would have been an asset.
If we have a sphere of influence that, uh, comes to the city, people live within that sphere of influence, should be included in some of the decisions that are made here by this body because it can affect them.
I think that could be a compromise of circumstances, Mr. Ishu.
Yeah, I agree with Mr. Harold.
Mr. Sagala?
Um, I, I would certainly disagree. I think that being part of a city, living in the city is how, I mean, I, I don't get to serve on a commission in Porterville or Lenzy or Miceli or anywhere else. I think that's what being, living in the city. And yes, some people live stones, throw away from the city limits. I mean, all those people that live off of Morris City, we had a development discussion, you know, we appointed them, uh, they live right outside, they live in the county territories. But I, I probably believe that, uh, being on a commission, being on a committee. But I probably believe that being on a commission, being on a committee should be a city resident. I guess we do have a sphere of influence, you know, it goes to certain boundaries. I don't know how that gets, how that sphere of influence gets determined. You know, maybe if it's by council or staff, maybe it gets pushed further out, further out. So I would rather us just work on providing our residents in city territory with that opportunity. Yes, we always work to try to find someone, but I would respectfully disagree with going beyond the city limits.
Do we need a motion on this? Mr. Sagal? Or direction?
Overall, this particular issue?
Whether we want to change these residents?
As long as we understand what council wants, I mean.
You can move it forward and you can do what?
Well, I think we'll have to come back, we'll have to lose our policy and then break back to you.
Right now, it's within the city limits, I'm sorry, Mr. Ishel.
No, the sidebar that I asked Mario was basically, I have a question with Board of Public Utilities. So there's certain ones that give us direction that if we were to say that, does that mean that has to go back into what process with that? I'm just going to sit down, open to what the council or the group has, and it's consensus in finding that. I don't necessarily advocate that it has to be changed, but if there's issue with that, I should understand, especially with the planning commission, because your planning commission deals with the general plan, it deals with the boundary. So just kind of seeing, of course, with other council members still about that issue.
And the different commissions, council members, different commissions, this issue is treated in a different way. For instance, a library commission, it seemed like those individuals should live in the city. The aviation commission, that could be the sphere of influence because it's broader use of the airport itself. The planning commission, because it deals with issues of planning within the city, probably should be its residents. So I guess theoretically, would Mr. Ishel, would you then evolve in some of this? Would it be out of the question to have a different requirement with each committee?
Yeah, do you really agree with it? I would agree, it's a combination of it. I would support that planning commission, but I think Board of Public Utilities and the Committee on Aging, parts of REC, I think that really come down to each one, I agree with what you're saying, there's, I think, probably applies to the people that involve. So planning commission, and it seems there was a consensus, you know, depending on each council member, I'd say, but the planning commission, you have LAPCO involved, you have the founder, you have Spirit. Our library board, like I said, of parts of REC, you know, I can see that you get the city, it's Talaria to write the check for that, and Talaria is ought to have the full book.
Well, let's real, yeah, let's real quickly go through, we've got two choices here, I think we have consensus of either in the city of Talaria, the city limits, or sphere of influence. We're in agreement, it's going to be one of them, is that correct? I would say, based on, does anyone object to the aviation committee being sphere of influence?
No.
No one objects? Of course, Board of Public Utilities, as I understand the charter, is someone who lives within the city of Talaria. Is that correct? Does everyone agree with that concept?
Yes.
Okay, Committee on Aging. Where are you pointing at?
Do you say she won? I've kind of spoken, I spoke in my own words.
We probably have people within the sphere of influence that use the senior senator for lunch, and that's why the commission.
Who's in, what's the requirements, who parts from? Brian?
Well, they do, to receive meals at the senior senator, they do have to live in Talaria. So that's through KT AAA, so they do have to be residents of Talaria to receive those meals. You know, there are other programs there where people can come in and enjoy different other type of programs that are from the city of Talaria, but for the meals, they do have to be from Talaria.
I think with that, just looking for comment, I would say the reason why is there's a county aging, you know, aging commission as well, and they also need to be generally. So I think our Committee on Aging is a bit more specific to the representation system because of the county. The same argument can be made about the planning commission, but I think it's a bit more intimate.
We have a consensus that Committee on Aging is the city limits. The measure I said is an oversight committee would be the same, is that correct? Yes. Library board would be city limits.
Do you have to be a citizen of the city to get a library card?
No, but the city, that's the asset, the city is the one that's funded. The city is the one that runs the, makes the decisions. And the library board is governed by the education code. I don't know if there's residency requirements within the education code, but my inclination as myself is that we keep that within the city limits. Does anyone disagree? As legal counsel is looking up the education code. One eight nine one zero, Matt, the Senate Counsel. Well, parts of REC, I think, sphere of influence is probably. Mr. Hare? Mr. Sagal? Based on the criteria we seem to be developing, I would think the planning commission is something uniquely decided by members of this city, so that it needs to be city limits. Brad?
But if you have, so what the sphere, because they have a business here in town.
Well, part of the, I understand, but part of the issues that came up off a, what's that development, we used to found for our property? If we had members of the planning commission in that sphere of influence, you know, that was controversial situation, but the planning commission had to make decisions, working with staff, they would want, I think, in that situation, people on the planning commission, who live in the city of Talaria.
Mark, anything to add on the planning commission?
Well, what I'm used to seeing in other jurisdictions, and they're all a little bit different, I don't know that that really has huge, very huge justus, in my opinion. I've seen, in terms of all of these matters, sphere of influence making sense, because that is the area which you're ultimately expanding into your, that's the intent of the sphere, that is where we're going to annex to, so they may not be in the city limits this year, but they may be next year. You know, I've seen cities move away from, most cities have criteria for members. You know, they need to be realtors, architects, engineers, they have to have some understanding of land use and zoning controls, but I've seen cities move away from that, it becomes harder to find people that meet down qualifications. So what I have seen that still stays pretty, pretty consistent is that council members kind of appoint, like they bring forth somebody that they represent their interest in. Now, what I would say with that regard is, where it gets a little confusing, I think, for us, is how do we talk to people about that, because they don't understand, well, I'm interested in serving on a board, so I want to put my name in the hot water for any and all these boards, but I may be more interested in this one than that one. But yeah, I mean, some of them, well, the council members are going to be the ones to recommend, so they don't understand, well, what does that mean? Do I need to go lobbying in front of each council member, or what do I do? Where council member issue it, says, well, we might, we might either know of somebody, or we might pull from the list and talk to those people, I just want you to be cognizant of that. A little bit of a dichotomy, because we hear that from applicants, what do we do with that? So I don't think there's a right way or a wrong way, I think you're heading in the right direction with where you want to go with this, I just want you to be aware of some of the barriers.
No, my question was pointed to the issue of a planning commission.
Right.
Would you recommend sphere of influence, or would you recommend as opposed to the city?
Sphere of influence, yeah.
Counsel, great. All right, just for the record, four, five. The Police Department Citizens Complaint Review Board. My inclination is, on this one, it's a lot along to what Mr. Sagal's saying, we keep that within the city limits. Counsel? Vice Mayor?
I disagree with that, before, there was a point, sphere of influence. So the vice mayor, I believe, probably were aware of why that was done with. I think, again, like the city manager said, people live out in that area, eventually, hopefully becoming in the city, living some annex, they certainly interact with our law enforcement in the city. They should have some input. They should apply to this commission, or this committee to do so.
Quick question on that particular one. I, and she can correct me if I'm wrong, but I don't believe that our police department patrols is outside the city limits. Is that correct?
Correct, it's strict jurisdictional issues.
So we don't go out in sphere of influence to, for a call? I mean, obviously, if there's an emergency type of thing, that's not.
There are calls for assistance on ramifications, but.
So. So that's, with that point, I would keep it with those folks to be in the city limits, in that regard.
I think that's a good point, I support.
No, what I would say was the fact that people live outside of the city could interact with the police department inside the city.
Well, people from my city could come right here and interact. We wasn't what, down off, citizens of U.
Again, go back to, at one point, they were on there. It was done away with.
Vice Mayor? City?
I absorb the times that Councilman Carroll and Carroll was serving, of course. I think I'm kind of leaning towards what we have used as either influence that goes, the planning commission has one that deeper influence of planning and land use decisions, but I lean more towards, as Chief England said, the point made that our police force is really inner serving above the internal police department. It's unfortunate that political reasons and others get involved. I think what we're doing here a bit is trying to mitigate a lot of those political issues that have come up. I've seen that as well in past departments, but rather, it's the council decision. And the city keeps that decision amongst the wrong, and I mean a bit, I'm saying I'm sympathetic to it, because I hear it, but I think with the police department, with the board, I'm more of a community data ones, city of Talaria, places get annexed or other things changes, then we can, the absorption can be qualified for.
Okay, it appears we have a consensus for the city of Talaria. Now, one thing I failed to do, and I'll correct that now, does anyone, we've discussed this, is there anyone in chambers that wishes to give a public comment on the matters that we're discussing now? Has anyone called in about this at all, Melissa?
Here, but you're not wearing your jacket, that's for.
Good evening, council mayor, council staff, fellow citizens, Jason, Ben, and Talaria. I'll keep it very brief, one item I harped on for a while and hasn't been brought up, but you briefly touched on it with Planning Commission, is education. It's very good that we have laid people on the planning commission, but a lot of people don't know about planning or annexation or how all these things happen. And there's many tools and online classes out there, just like you have Brown Act training, a little ninety minute seminar once a year is a requirement. And if, you know, there's some money in the kitty for that, to require commissioners to have education to improve themselves and their knowledge, so they can do their job better. I know Tracy, I'm going to put you on the spot, you had the four day class at UC Davis that you found incredible. I think that there was something about planning that Trace has taken at UC Davis, so I'm going to use her as a source, you can talk to her and see if there's something there for that. But I just think education is really key in a lot of these positions. I'm glad the term limits didn't go through, I mean, I understand somebody sitting there for twenty years is a problem, but I think a bigger problem is, we throw out the knowledge to have somebody new on that has no clue. I mean, just like Mark said, they want to serve, but they don't know what they want to do. And then you put them on Planning Commission or Board of Public Utilities. Board of Public Utilities, you want somebody that's been there twelve years. That's not an easy system to understand, I mean, it's a larger budget than the general fund. And staff, I mean, as good as staff is, they don't have the time, all the time, to start from, you know, water one-on-one, sewer one-on-one, and keep educating new people all the time to do that. So I'm glad we're not doing term limits, and again, I just push for education for commissioners on committees. Thank you.
Thank you. Meanwhile. Okay, I think we've dealt with.
Mr. Hare, I have just one question on the sphere of influence. If someone could share with me how and who determines that? Is that something within the city or something that's outside the city? Who determines the sphere of influence?
Well, when the city council updates its general plan on a periodic basis, it establishes its sphere of influence. The LAPCO does have the same sphere of influence as well, and the city also negotiates with the county from time to time with regard to what that mutually agreed upon line is. Typically, it's not a terribly controversial topic. The city's sphere of influence lines remain pretty static for a while now. But it is your city council that establishes the SOI.
So in the general plan discussion, if we wanted to push it out two miles, three miles, four miles, that's up top?
That would be very bad planning, but it would be up to.
But technically, that could be.
Technically, yes.
That is correct.
Clear, last though, also.
Yes.
So. It's subject to approval by after.
You can recommend it, and you can take it to them and ask for their approval of it, but you're not the final authority on that.
That's what I was going to get at, so, yeah, who's the final authority? We could say, hey, our sphere of influence is, you know, call them, we didn't go up to that far. And someone's going to say, no, that's not.
A better example is Vicelia saying their sphere of influence took in Tegas Ranch. And we tried to fight that, and Tegas Ranch is in their sphere of influence. Am I not right?
You are correct.
All right, in other words, it's a little bit. Some people win, and some people lose.
Oh, I know that, I know that very well, for years.
Counsel.
Or is I'm talking about the old, the oldies?
Mayor, can I get a little bit of certainty on the residency requirements? Previously, it was they even to have their principal traits of resident for business with a sphere of influence. Is that how you want them to have a business as well, or is there a resident?
Just minor, I think consensus is residence. You know, where they're registered to grow, it's flexible.
Well, on that particular issue, I did want to bring up something that I know I have, when we talked about this, it was very hard to get rid of the language, because it said citizen, you had to be a citizen to serve on a commission, and that was interpreted as someone being registered to grow. And I know that when we had the discussion, we removed that word, that comp, that language, because, you know, we have DACA, we have permanent residents, we have folks that probably aren't even citizens in our region, but we wanted to encourage as many people as possible to serve. So I wanted to see if that's something that we could, if it needed to be put in, there's, anybody can serve regardless of citizenship or status, because I think that's another way that we want it. Now, there may be some commissions that require citizenship, which I don't see, but that was something that when it came to being registered to grow, that was not necessarily a requirement that I, that I knew that. That was not necessarily a requirement that I, that I knew that we removed from, from the requirements of residency, whatever we call it. So I want to make sure we continue that. So if you're a doctor student, you're a permanent resident, if you're a citizen or just, you know, someone that lives in a city that wants to serve, I don't think we should preclude that.
Let's, let's for a second time, let's bring that back. And then we can deal with the language as it comes back to us instead of speculating on what we may be dealing with. And if you go through each and every item that we have here, I think you should have a pretty, I can keep in my notes here and I'm sure you did. On which committees are spare events, influence of which are a city ballot.
Yes, in turn, response to Mr. Sodol, I believe that, uh, or I think it's your power part of the state power part of what we can require citizenship for to serve on those.
We're talking about residents. People live, where people live.
Right.
Whether they're citizens or not citizens or whatever it is. Talking about where they.
Yeah, and I just wanted to make it clear that that was, that's the, I guess, the law mass. So I want to make sure that if people out there want to serve, and I just want to be sure that they understand that they can. Regardless of residency, status or citizenship.
Okay, I think we'll move on to item number two. Evening with. Trying to figure out whose this is. This is, uh, Mara, yours.
Good evening, Mayor Maderos, Vice Mayor Sayer, council members. Mario and I, a city planner, and I'll keep my presentation pretty brief. Uh, thank, thank you, Mark. So the item before you was actually requested by this council to be brought forth to review what the existing appeals process is in the city of Teleri. Uh, for appealing decisions made by the community and economic development director, uh, or the planning commission. Uh, so in other words, director decisions, which can be appealed to the planning commission, planning commission decisions that can be appealed to the city council. Um, and really the request, um, involved, uh, looking at maybe perhaps what other cities in this general area do. Um, both in terms of the fees that are charged as well as what the process is. And, uh, so you'll, you'll find this table in your staff report. Really the only thing I added after the staff report was submitted was who can file an appeal, which is in the last column. Um, so just very briefly, um, the appeals process is pretty consistent among all the cities. And I surveyed pretty much from Delano up to Clovis, uh, didn't include the city of Fresno, just given the scale, um, how much larger it is. So you'll find some smaller cities, cities very similar to the size of Teleri, some maybe actually very few that are, well, Vicelia is in there, that's a lot that are larger. But the appeals process is mostly the same in the sense that a director decision can be appealed to the planning commission. Um, and then planning commission decisions can be appealed to the council. There are a few exceptions. For example, the city of Porterville does not have a planning commission, so it bypasses that step. The appeal.
That's the first page, sir. What's the next?
Oh, it's just third in alphabetical order. Um, so yes, starting with Clovis and finishing with Woodlake, and I've highlighted the city of Teleri. Um, so generally speaking, that's kind of where the process lies within the comparison of these cities. The fee is kind of all over the place. Um, there are two cities that charge no fee. Um, several cities that charge more than the city of Teleri's fee. A few that are kind of right in line with, with what we charge and, and some that are over what the city of Teleri charges.
Is there any fee in Teleri to appeal to the planning?
Yes, so that we have one fee, whether appealing to the planning commission or applying commission decision to the council. It is listed there in a table. Um, the current fee is one thousand, one hundred and eighteen dollars. And what that generally entails, and I won't speak for how the other cities set their fee, but when we did our fee study, it includes, uh, so typically for an appeal, you have a public hearing. So it has to be publicly noticed in the newspaper. So it covers the publication fee, which is usually a few hundred dollars at the publishing newspaper for public notice. Cover staff time to prepare the staff reports, including the two upholding the appeal or rejecting the appeal resolutions. Uh, so really it covers the cost to get everything ready for council. Um, and then as in terms of who can file the appeal, um, for the city of Teleri, uh, what it says in our code now is that any person dissatisfied with decision of the, of the director or the planning commission, um, can appeal. Ours also has a provision that the director can also appeal a planning commission decision if certain findings are made, which generally have to do with the legal obligations under state planning law. Of what the planning commission is supposed to be, uh, approving or disapproving projects on, right? Um, but most of the, in terms of who can appeal, they have various variations of the terminology, but most of them are any person or anyone who's dissatisfied. Um, a few, uh, cities allow the city council to bring forth an appeal, um, either by vote or the city of Clovis. I think is the one that says any council member can simply, uh, bring forth, uh, a decision for an appeal hearing as well. Um, but essentially the item is that staff is presenting you with this information, uh, for your consideration and to provide any direction to staff. On, on what the council's pleasure is in terms of whether revising our process and our fee, um, and also to answer any questions. That's, uh, the conclusion of my presentation. Thank you.
Okay, we'll go around. I do have one question. Generally, the system we have right now is working. We don't have, well, I asked Tracy.
Yeah, the system is working as it should. So anybody that is, uh, not happy with either a decision of myself or planning mission will come in and file an appeal, um, to the appropriate reviewing body.
Mark, do you have any input on?
Well, counsel, you know, I, I've seen it all over the place as well in other jurisdictions. Um, I think what I, I agree with Tracy's comment that I don't really see a problem right now with what we're doing and how we do it. Um, for example, if you, what would be a very common issue that would get appealed is some type of zoning change or land use change that affects a residential neighborhood. Those residential neighborhoods are going to be, you know, a hundred homes or, or more. And so if you have a fee that's set at eleven hundred dollars, you could have four individuals get together, put two hundred fifty bucks in each. And now that's a night out with a family at the movie theater and dinner. In my opinion, that costs prohibitive to be able to file appeal. I think where, where I get concerned is when you look at some of those jurisdictions that have zero fee, that's a problem in my mind for a couple of reasons. One, that means the rest of the taxpayers are covering the cost of that appeal for that to be advertised in the newspaper. And that shouldn't be the case. It should be those who want to have issue, take issue. I think part of the reason for that is in our planning process, there's already a process that allows for many opportunities to give input into the process. For example, people file a sequel litigation all the time and it costs you zero dollars, dollars to do that. So there's all kinds of ways that you can give input in the process or slow the process down or stop the process. To go to something less than what it is to cover our cost, I think, in my opinion, would not be, it seems like we'd be solving, trying to solve a problem that we don't know. That, that doesn't exist, right? So that would be my perspective on it. Uh, but obviously staff's here to follow whatever council's direction.
Strategic.
Yeah, yeah.
Vice Mayor. Mr. Isher.
Yeah, I, you know, there was an issue and some residents went to the planning commission, residents reached out to council members and came to us on this. So it was us as council that wanted to look at this and I think also know the facts. So I appreciate the staff report to bring this research forward. Um, I know I was concerned about this issue and I think sometimes where it comes from is, is it seen as a process for the individual, for the little guy? Um, it's the, it's the one person who's, you know, kind of been beat up, perhaps by a big project or a big decision. And it ought to be accessible that, you know, the, the minority vote can appeal the majority vote. However, I think as the city manager said, in many circumstances that we see is a lot of times it's, it's one individual or it's a motion or others that gets with that. And I'm interviewing this and I think looking at that is there are many steps along the way. There are petitions to property owners, there are public hearings, there are those steps that, that come forth before the planning commission. That the public, the little guy or the big, the big company all have the same access to the same information in the same process. And I think with that is if the appeal does come down to it is looking at the cost, if the cost was too high. And, and I would say I changed my mind that at first it was grabbing like a thousand dollars, that's expensive. But the reality of it is a shitty wood is best for a neighborhood or a region. And I do think it should have to go out and get petitioned and we made that for traffic mitigation issues. You have to go out and get neighbors. And I think that that's the same fair process. Um, one, one person, not to take away merit from an issue, but there's process to express your merit. I think collaboratively to, to raise the funds or get people together or whatever that looks like to create the thousand dollars to cover our cost has merit. Um, so if, if kind of our discussion at this moment is just on the fee, uh, I've come to where I think the system we have right now is appropriate. I think it addresses all of that. And I think rather than empowering a mob, if it were zero dollars, you really empower, I think, stuff out of merit of a project. But the fee allows a coalition of neighbors to address something that perhaps needs to be reviewed and allows that process. So I'm for keeping the fee, um, the same. I, there's, I'll wait for mayor for your direction of conversation about city council being able to appeal. Uh, I don't know if you're looking for comment on that yet or not. I, to jump in that.
Jump in on that.
Okay, I don't endorse, um, us having, I, our current policy doesn't have that or doesn't say, but I don't endorse city council members being able to petition. The reason is I think it creates a conflict that if you're bringing something to petition it, what's your position when you are supposed to be the neutral body to hear those? Uh, there's a process for that, businesses, residential neighbors or others can file that process and it comes before the council. And I think the council should take that all under consideration, but let the public process quiet stuff out. If council members involved in that, I think it, it, it disputes it because if you're bringing it forward, what are you saying is your position in being a neutral body for? Either the plaintiff or the defendant of what you're petitioning against. I know, I don't want to use legal terms, but just for the lack of better itself. Thanks, yeah.
Mr. Isher, I'm Mr. Scott. Um, on the idea of a council, um, I'm open to having a discussion. I mean, I don't close up, but I, I understand where the session was coming from. Um, but, um, I also think that the process is available to everyone, but I don't necessarily agree that it's the same for everyone. Like for example, we had the, uh, those businesses that appealed the electric fence issue. So my question, did they pay the eleven eighteen for it to come to council, right? So a business, a corporation, they have more access to that kind of money than a resident. In terms of appealing, uh, a decision that's going to impact them next door neighbor. So it's not all equal level, I, my opinion. Uh, those folks did have money, they appealed and then they, they won by the appeal when it came to council. On the electric fence issues. And so I, I, I would be open to maybe discussion, a combination. I think Mr. Isher would talk about the petitioning. I know that we have that in traffic calming, we had a good discussion as to what was a good threshold, right? I think we went from ten people to fifty people and how many people around that area? I, I'd be open to having something like that. So if, if, if you wanted to appeal a decision, I agree with city manager, a lot of it is land use, you know, senior type of things. You wanted to appeal something, you can straight up pay the fee. I'm open to lowering the fee a little bit. Um, but if you were to get, let's say X amount of signatures, uh, that that would also qualify for an appeal. You know, so go out there, walk door to door, meet your neighbors, talk to them. And if there's a majority of whatever that number is set that wants to appeal it, that there probably could still be a fee. But it, it, the fee would be lower given X amount of signatures. So I mean, I think there's a combination to look at that. Um, because, uh, you know, my time, uh, that I've been around, there hasn't really been that many appeals. And I guess staff would be able to attest to that, doesn't happen often. And, and I don't know, I don't know why it doesn't happen, but I would suspect the fee precludes people from, from that, so.
Can I ask you about one question?
Sure.
How many times have people come to them and said they didn't appeal because of the fee?
I've heard people come to council. Uh, there was one day one where they didn't know, we thought what the fee wasn't yet. You know, I guess it wasn't important, at least in my estimation to them, but.
That was, that was the objection to the mental health facility in Delago. And I can guarantee that, how many people showed up, uh, Tracy from Delago at the planning commission?
I don't believe there was any.
Okay, so they could have gone to people in Delago, which is now in my district. And raised a thousand, what's the figure?
Eleven eighty-one, eleven eighteen.
They could have raised that money. As opposed to getting signatures and having, uh, the city has to pay for it. It's just, you know what it is usually? It's just the effort to go out and raise the money. Uh, it's, I, I, I think, well, I'm sorry, um, Mr. Harold, you haven't spoken yet, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Let's say I agree with, you know, what Mr. Isher would have done, Mr. Scott, what you said. Where I was looking at it was responsibility maybe for creating some type of petition like. Other cases. Say the individuals, they can't raise the money. From a lower economic part of town or something like that. That's why I was thinking maybe the petitions side ever might be, or, um, a split fee, the fee was now reduced. Had decided they had petitioned some signatures, that there was still a fee that was pretty reduced. Eleven hundred dollars.
Well, then we have to be in a position to determine what greatly reduced, what that amount actually should be. The way it's priced right now to me seems to be fairly in the middle of what it is we're dealing with. And it has a basic requirement of anyone that wants to appeal the decision of the planning commission. To, to get their ducks in a order and go out, uh, and seek people that are like-minded. And have a little fundraiser to raise the money. I mean, we have, we have money raised in all kinds of different ways. I don't think this is asking too much. I think the system works. I think we leave it the way it is, that's my, well, if I, if that's going. Vice Mayor, anything else? You're, you say no, but it's. If you don't want to know what your position.
I understand, I understand, uh, the cost for the city. Personally, I wanted to do an appeal at one time and didn't understand the system. If I had understood the system, I could have easily rallied, uh, ten people to help me and all put in a hundred dollars if, if I had known that was hoping to do. Now I know that, um, I, I really feel like we should, we, we should probably leave it the way it is. If someone can't come up with the money, they come and say that's the reason, then perhaps we could assist them understanding what they can do. I mean, there is that short timeframe that they can come and make an appeal to help them understand that half a day to make people and assist them in understanding how they want to do that. Because they may not know, just like I didn't know.
In other words, but part of the procedure is they'll let them know if they have an adverse decision, let them know early on what they have to do to establish the appeal. Do you do that already, Tracy?
Yes, staff, anytime a, um, typically if, if somebody is objecting to a project, they will get into the mix early on. And staff will advise them, look, if you're not like, uh, happy with the decision tonight, then come talk to staff, we'll work you through the appeal process. Uh, I think one thing council should note is that if you do reduce the fee, right now the noticing requirements are running anywhere between eight hundred and a thousand dollars. So that leaves very minimal time for staff time to prepare for the actual appeal hearing itself. And so if council were to reduce the fee, um, just we would have to recognize that someone would have to be subsidized somehow in bringing that appeal back to the decision-making body. And so, um, but yeah, staff does well. Yeah.
Mr. Isher, can you just, Mr. Isher?
I, I think coming back and, and understanding the merit to it, to, to Mr. Harold, kind of looking at, at, at a compromise to it in between is. I kind of want to come back to the dynamic that a lot of our arguments presented here, and I presented this too, because it comes from advocating for the disadvantaged or advocating for low income. And other areas. And I, and I think we would all be in consensus with that. However, I would propose that actually, I would say the majority of this issue. However, I would propose that actually, I would say the majority of this issue is not about the little guy. What it is, is usually the petitions are when it's a service for some element to help the disadvantaged or to help low-income folks. That's the decision that's appealed. If it's low-income apartments or it's change use or it's public supportive housing, or if it's mental health, those are the decisions that actually are appealed. A business upon business decision that we said would, you know, involves just a whole different dynamic with it, but most of the time, and the part I just kind of wanted to change a little bit of perspective or offer a little bit is most of the appeals are from folks that disagree with that type of service element. And if it's at zero or if it's after reduced, it, at a point incites the mob that it's easy for us to oppose those housing authority departments coming into this neighborhood, even though it's been zoned for twenty-five years and even though it was there, it was established and there was public hearings, it gets, it gets frustrating. And so, um, with this, I agree with the comment said, but I think generally what we will find and what is presented is looking at it from that lens, and those are the appeals that are oft, most often presented.
Um, just a couple of questions. One for our, uh, city attorney, uh, if, if a council member appeals, does that automatically kick you out of the process?
If, if a council member is.
So if a council, let's say a planning, and there's a planning commission issue, and we have the ability like Clovis to say, hey, I want that to come to council, does that make you automatically biased? Is that, I mean, does that happen in Clovis? So that council member doesn't get to participate in the discussion?
Uh, I would think it wouldn't. I, I don't know for sure, but I would, in, with the rules of bias, how they go, there's a difference between, uh, a, a council member requesting here something, uh, then and, and the difference between a council member explaining to a citizen, here's the process, and then a council person saying, here is the process and I am advocating for you. As soon as you cross the line into advocacy for the citizen, you potentially disqualify yourself from being part of that, that decision.
I think he's saying, I don't want to speak through that, take us allowing council members to initiate the appeal ourselves, to bring it before us to.
Does that automate, so did they say there's a?
It doesn't like the ruling of the planning.
In my district for some project.
So he says, I, I don't care what anybody else says. I want to have the authorities, the council member, to appeal that up to you and the other council.
Does that automatically make me biased?
I couldn't, I couldn't tell you for sure. My, my suspicion would be that that alone would not disqualify.
Because I, I would imagine, because Clovis being so, and I know a few council members of Clovis, they've been so engaged in the community that if they have this policy in place and they know that if I appeal something, I can't participate, I don't think they do it. So somehow they're able to do it, because you said Clovis is the only one listed that allows council members to appeal decisions to the council. So that adds to one question, uh, on, on the legal side, does that preclude us?
Can I make one comment?
Sure.
Clovis has had a history of issues, Tracy's smiling, has had a history of issues with the political nature and the problems with their planning. And these types and, and the council itself. So I don't know if Clovis is the best example.
Well, it's the only one we have.
It, it is a very thin line, and that's why I say just the fact that a council member has that ability, I don't think would disqualify them. But as soon as you start advocating on their behalf, or if you've had conversations with them about what might happen, you, you essentially taking yourself out of the, the process.
What becomes what?
Correct. And, and in that situation, the council's supposed to be an impartial body. And so that's why advocating for a constituent as opposed to telling them, go talk to Tracy, there's a process, that's, that's completely different.
And then, and then the other, um, question I have with Tracy is, you mentioned that it's about eight hundred to a thousand to process the paperwork, or is that include staff time? Or, uh, uh, because you know, staff is being paid to be working, and then you have all kinds of responsibilities, but then you, you're adding another responsibility of an appeal. Does that mean we're charging more for your staff time or?
No, I, what I was referencing was the noticing actually in the newspaper. What the newspaper charges us just to notice a public hearing is getting astronomical. So with just that going up itself, would look at an increase in fee. Now with the appeal, we, um, we chose to raise it a year and a half ago. We did not choose to raise it this last year when council, when we brought back. That was the only fee that we did not raise, but we didn't take into consideration of the cost in the publication. So we're, we're, our, our advertising and publication budget for planning is, it's getting pretty large.
And state law requires publication in adjudicated newspaper for those types of decisions.
And the advanced register times delta, it kept the advanced register to keep us within the newspaper general circulation. They're the only. They, they play with their own ball, so we have to, I know like a, a petition, Mario might know this, but petition to administer in the state in the advanced register now is about fifteen hundred dollars alone. And I don't know that the publication of that's too much different than what you're talking about on the notice to appeal. So we're behind as it's anything.
Mayor, if I may, I do have an experience with council members having the ability to elevate decisions of the planning commission with another jurisdiction. And, uh, just to report on what my experience was, it, it didn't work. And the reason was there happened to be a council member who was very no growth. And it gave a single council member the opportunity to substantially slow down by up to a month to six weeks just by filing a piece of paper with no cost or anything, um, a, a development project, and it was happening on a periodic basis. So if your council were to explore that path, I would strongly suggest that your, your council look at instituting some types of checks and balances. For example, a second council member signing on that the item were, uh, to be, uh, considered.
I think that can be considered when we get to the point where we have, uh, we start moving in that direction. I don't sense that that may be the case. Mr. Harold, again.
I have a, I have a question. Um, so anyone can come to a public meeting and express their position, that costs nothing. If it's put into the newspaper, that might eliminate some people from knowing about the public hearing. The public hearing is also on the website. What, where else is the public hearing noticed given?
So it's sent to, um, the, uh, residents or businesses within a three hundred, uh, foot radius from the proposed project. And then it's published in the newspapers of, of general circulation, which is the Tslaray batch register and the Visalia times delta. And then we will put any type of pending projects on the city's, um, planning commission or city council website. All of the, the notices and the staff reports are on those, the websites. And yes, that's all free to the public.
I mean, that's free for the public to come and ask before the ten-day where they could make an appeal, right?
Yeah, that's just notifying them of the hearing. So should they, if they want to voice their discontentment about a particular project, attending a planning commission meeting or a city council meeting is at no cost as well to that, that system.
Are there occasions when people do have to, um, express their unhappiness or discontent that the planning commission changes their mind?
Um, I haven't had many occasions on that. When staff prepares our staff reports and looking at a particular project, we stay very neutral and we just look at the code, we look at, we do our research. Um, and so the recommendation that we generally make to the planning commission is one of basic fact. And so for planning commission to rule or decide or vote against maybe a staff recommendation or against what the zoning code says um, is not very often because that would subject them to a potential lawsuit.
So they consider that, they consider the constituents request their, um, opposition and then they make the best possible answer or decision for everybody, well.
Correct.
And there can be times at public hearings where someone raises an issue that requires further consideration, and I've seen planning commissions table that. And they say, you know what, we're gonna, we're not gonna vote on this one, we're gonna wait, come back in two weeks or a month, and we want staff to do research on this issue and bring it back. So those kinds of things happen as well. It, it's, it's, I, when there are, you know, I, I don't mean to, I'm just unbiased here for a second, but when there are matters that are matters of law, sequel related, planning law, code issues that for, you know, for some reason we missed or stepped in a good job and those are raised, that's the time to really step the brakes and let's talk about it. When it's more issues that are emotional nature or personal preference, I really don't like that fast food store, I would rather be this other festival. That's, that doesn't, that's not part of the process.
Okay, before we move any further, I again have not given the public an opportunity to comment. Uh, you may call at five five nine three six six one eight four nine. Don't go too far, Mario. Is there anyone in the chambers that wishes to give public comment on this item? Not this time, Mr. Ben. Okay. Anyone call in? Okay, I will close public comment on this item. Um, my general, I, you're looking for direction, is that correct? Mario, looking for direction?
Uh, yes, um, Mr. Mayor, so it's an informational item that was brought back for, um, your council's discussion and just any further direction as.
My attitude. It's working with the. Vice Mayor. Yeah, you're asking for input and what does that input look like, but without that, I, I would say. Mr. Sical.
Um, I, I think there's an opportunity to explore options. Uh, so I would, I would propose that, uh, we look at, uh, some sort of hybrid type of petition gathering, folks, you know, uh, you know. It's good to know that I can go to Delago and raise money over there, but there are certain communities that can't do that, that there's some kind of ability for them to appeal a project. So if there's, I, I don't think it'll hurt the council for us to get a report back to say, hey, this is a way it could work where you get a hundred signatures, fifty signatures. That, that also could be, uh, could be a demonstration of a community's concern with a particular planning commission decision. So I think I would ask at least a minimum for that to be explored and brought back.
Mr. Harold.
I agree that it's working, but I do, Mr. Sical.
Okay, unless anyone changes, they're both, we have a free to, to, uh, thank you for the information and basically. Okay, let's move on to, uh, the general business item number three, uh, which, who, that's yours.
It is my question.
I didn't make my eight o'clock, I'm sorry.
Okay, so this is a post ordinance, uh, to add section, uh, subsection C to section six point one two point, uh, minus nine zero to the municipal code relating to feral cats. Uh, the subsection C tags, uh, an option for the manager of animal services to essentially capture that large feral cat, um, determine whether there's, there's fed or neutered, uh, or vaccinated, and, um, then if they're not, uh, have that animal spayed, neutered or vaccinated, and then return to the area where, uh, they were, they were caught. Uh, I had a couple of questions, uh, one from Councilwoman Sarah, one from, uh, a member of the, uh, I'm sorry, uh, the director of the hospital, um, call and ask questions about, uh, fines for feeding feral cats. Uh, that is not in this ordinance, but the, that, those enforcement mechanisms already exist within this chapter. Uh, section of four three zero, uh, of chapter six point one two discusses any violation, uh, in, anybody, uh, commits a violation, uh, of the chapter is guilty of an infraction. And those infractions are enforced in a different part of the municipal code, uh, section one point six one point zero four zero. Um, and those include fines of a hundred dollars for the first violation, two hundred dollars for the second, and five hundred for subsequent violations. Uh, so while this ordinance does not change, uh, that or the, uh, illegality of, of feeding feral cats, that is already prohibited in, in the ordinance that is addressed there. Uh, the final, uh, I do have a correction to the ordinance, the second ordinance should read, whereas the purpose of the revisions of this ordinance is to add an additional option for animal control related to the seizure of feral cats. Uh, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Very good. Before we get to that, is there, now that this presentation has been made, is there anyone that wishes to give, uh, public comment on this issue? Also, anyone wishing to call on this issue can do so at five five nine three six six one eight four nine. Hearing no one, having no one come forward on the feral cat issue, uh, no one calling, who do you have? So please identify yourself.
My name is Michael Wells and, uh, I live in, on B Street here in Tulare. I did, I, the reason I'm come forward because just today, I, I seen, uh, a cat with her kittens on the, what can we do about turning cats in? Because, you know, it's, it, it's a big problem. It, you know, cats are everywhere, you know, and they, they're, they're continuing to grow because, uh, that's just the way it is.
Mr. Simal, why don't you answer that question? Much we adopted.
Yeah, this, uh, this amendment is, uh, partially to address that situation where people can call, have the ability to, uh, have the animal services manager capture the, the animal, uh, and get it spayed or neutered and then released. Uh, I saw it has a, a very similar program. I think if, uh, Chief, this was kind of taken from my side. Uh, but, um, I have experienced, recent experience with that program. Um, our, our dog actually recently, the next day, a cat gave birth to a litter in her backyard. And so we went through the process where we had to trap it, but we, we paid for them, but you deliver them to the city, they caused them to get spayed or neutered and then they, they released them. Uh, and so I think part of this subsection is to, to at least give the public an option, because we don't have that option right now.
Okay. Thank you.
And we, we are in the process of, um, working with the feral cat coalition out of Visalia. And, uh, the animal services are in the process now of getting another vet check and another vet in order to do this process of capturing, spaying and neutering and then returning them, uh, at least they won't have babies and, uh, try to, try to do that. But it's also under the animal nuisance, uh, code that, um, the animal shelter can come and get those cats. And if whomever's feeding them or encouraging them to continue can be fined. And so that's what we're trying to really get the public to know. And as far as a nuisance, that's whenever they're causing pee, people and urine in, in an area where the odor is causing a health issue, which is what's happening at the hospital and other places. So we really have that on our radar. We're working really hard with animals shelter and the director and the foundation and the coalition for feral cats to remedy this problem. It's just taking longer than we want to, but we're really aware of it.
Is there anyone else in the chambers that wishes to get public comment? Seeing none, is, uh, anyone else call? Yeah, we'll close that. Council, uh, any discussion as relates to this matter, right there, if you think you wish to add?
I just think it's really important that we get the message out and, and we're going to do that as quickly as we can. So we've just lost another vet tech, but we're trying to get the, um, staff that we can start the spaying neuter clinic right here in Tulare. Uh, the mission, the operation was donated by the Rotary. We have the, the, um, you know, the stuff you need to do it. We just need the people and we've also ordered traps. So we're well on our way to try to, try to address this issue because it is a citywide issue. It's not just at the hospital right there. And, uh, so it, it's, we're really trying to, to do something about it, but the fact that they cannot feed these feral cat communities, we can start to really enforce those fines. So if you know who's feeding them, you need to let us know. So if you know who's feeding them, you need to let us know.
I, I take it you're in support of the past.
Yeah, uh, I appreciate the staff update and the, kinds of the changes Mr. Zemora had said about allowing now the parties to trap feral cats in that process. You, you, it was also noted that fourth point, well, it's six point twelve, which clearly states, but there's a violation for feeding the feral cats. Uh, is, so is the flip side in the ordinance as well true that therefore we have the same issue which has been described here, but if the person claims ownership? So if the person has twenty seven cats and they're feeding them and it's said that's a violation of feeding feral cats, well, I own all that twenty seven cats. I think there's an instance that they, they could be fined for responsibility towards control or spaying neuter of those. My, my, I'm trying not to make an egregious example. It's, it's true. It's a household, I think part of the loophole has been a household can say all those cats that feral, they're out of my control. And then if you try to do something about it, oh wait, those are my cats. Well, I think we, we have it covered, but can you walk through that a little bit?
Yeah, there's, there's actually a different part of the, uh, the code, uh, it's in six point one two point two one zero where animal nuisance, nuisances in general are prohibited. And so if now somebody that claims ownership, it would be a violation of, of that particular section. Uh, and part of that is, uh, sanitary conditions, uh, dangerous animals. You know, there, there's a, a section in here about, uh, you know, chasing vehicles, parking, things like that. So there's different sections that will, will cover that.
So, no, I, I appreciate that because I appreciate the staffs who knew it coming back because I think that was part of it too was an, an enforcement provision that seems to kind of go if we call code enforcement or how to deal with this. And in, in a quick nutshell, you've addressed that, that the ordinance does carry the, cover those areas. So I, I know I brought this up as well as with council member Sarah, and I think my concerns are covered and I too support this. Um, just a, a couple of things. I, uh, so what I'm reading this is that the animal manager of animal services is basically deputizing folks to go out and get cats that they feel need to be spayed or neutered. Um, and so is there, is there, um, aside from this, is there an actual ordinance that requires every cat in the city to be spayed or neutered like we do with the animals? I mean, is that, is that, is that in the ordinance? I see the Vice Mayor saying yes, so it's okay. This is more, so there's already, so technically my neighbor, yes, there's a neighbor. I got a bunch of cats that roam around my front yard all the time. So technically my neighbor who owns that cat is in violation of city ordinance if that cat is not spayed or neutered.
That's incorrect.
That'd be correct. And so, um, I guess, because one question, I mean, I, I, I support the effort. I understand the issue and when it's to happen. And I think the, you know, as I say, in my, in my, in my perception, when people are being deputized to go out and get these cats, um, is there any particular liability that we would put a private citizen in for doing this in terms of like, if, if, if someone in my neighborhood is fed with cats and sees the ordinance, and now I'm empowered to go take a cat? I'm gonna go take your cat from your yard, from your front yard, from your backyard, take it down with control and without your knowledge, get it spayed or neutered. Is there any liability for that individual? Or is there any liability for us?
Uh, likely for that individual, but the ordinance requires approval from the manager prior to taking the cat.
So the person has to say, I'm gonna get that specific cat and that specific house and, uh, you okay with me? And I can do it.
Essentially, yes.
Because I'm just trying to think of, of, of how, because I know cat, folks have fed up with cats. You know, I, I lived in neighborhoods where there was one animal, well, nowadays, of course. Well, no, but I've been saying, I mean, you know, there's cats that get out and they're in homes. They're not, well, they're not certainly feral, it's just that they're not enjoy cats. So, uh, I'm just trying to figure out if there's any liability on it. Part ideally for someone to go out and start rounding up cats because they think they're feral and they baby and then, you know, getting them fixed without the owner's consent.
The owners, the owners have a certain amount of time. They're first given a citation and they have a certain amount of time to take care of that. And then they're out of compliance with the citation. At that point, the animal shelter director can determine whether or not to impound that cat or give the person additional time to have it spayed and neutered. But it says readily, or no person shall own, harbor or keep within the incorporated area in Tulare a dog or cat over the age of six months, which has not been spayed or neutered.
Which we know it. A lot of folks are violating, right? So, so that, so that's the only kind of question I had is how, how would that create? Because you're, the manager of animal services is empowering angel out there, is empowering, you know, Bender to go ahead, go get the cats that you think need to be fixed. And so I'm just trying to figure out.
It's a, it's an application process to, to make sure they have the ability to do so.
So there's a process and, yes. Yeah, that was a clear, Mr. Harold, thank you.
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion to approve that, uh, pass the print ordinance of the city council of the city of Tulare adding section six point twelve point three nine zero, subsection C in the city of Tulare Municipal Code.
I appreciate that, but that's not my opportunity to talk about the feral cats.
Well, I was thinking.
I'll say to you, so if you really. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Do you oppose? I'm sure we have issues to deal with. Thank you, Mr. Harold. Um, let's move to item number four. Uh, Diego, this is yours.
Yes, good evening, Mayor and Council. The staff report is to the council, an update of twenty two twenty three appropriated funds for council travel and community improvement district. Each council member has a budget, a combined budget of five thousand dollars. Our staff will keep seeing council quarters, that's something to count on a quarterly basis. If any adjustments will be brought back to council during video. That completes that.
This is an informational item, is that correct? Does anyone have public comment as it relates to this particular general business item? Seeing none, is anyone called in? Vice Mayor, do you have any questions as it relates to this informational item? Mr. Ishwood, Mr. Segala?
Yes, um, I did request this item, but I just wanted to make sure that there was a proper understanding. When we adopted the budget, we have the twenty five hundred and twenty five hundred that's laid out here for the previous fiscal. In the adoption of the budget, I requested as part of that, that money be rolled over. So does that mean now we have five thousand and five thousand? First question.
It's not common practice to roll over unspent funds from previous, previous year. So if those were appropriated in the previous year, they need to be spent in the previous year. I feel more comfortable giving council this budget this year and making any changes of this particular year. Those previous funds were not in covered or in a connected EO, so it's not an easy process to roll over. That will give it any department with an unspent balance, the ability to roll funds over if that's not an appropriation of budgets works.
Well, and, and, and that's good to know because I, if that was the case, I would have spent it in June because we were rushing to pass the budget. That was my understanding. He said, hey, I'll support the budget with that instance that would roll over. So, because there are things that, you know, we could use. I mean, we threw the pandemic and a lot of its own travel and we had indiscretions. So what I'm hearing now is that we lost it, you know?
And I agree with Mr. Segala. I think our discussion was that we could, as a council, roll it over. And, and, and we were gonna go ahead and approve the budget, but it was the understanding of council that we would do that.
Well, the council actually, my, my recollection was that, I'm not aware in any budget I've ever done in any city. I think we rolled over money. But, what I recall us talking about, we would come back to, we're doing tonight. And we're saying, in your current budget, you have these dollars. You'll recall that when we adopted the budget, there was a twenty six thousand dollar budget surplus, so to speak. Tonight would be the time, if you want this, what we have given you tonight, say you have this five thousand total divided equally into two different councils. Tonight would be the time for you to say, we want this to be doubled. Then we will come back to you with a budget amendment at the next meeting. That's why we have this on the agenda. It's for you to tell us what do you want to do. I didn't know if you were going to be satisfied with what you have here or if you're going to want to double it. But if that is the consensus to double, we'll bring you back a budget amendment.
Well, and I think the budget amendment shouldn't be to just double it. It should be modified or amended to reflect what was left over, uh, from last year. And as to each district, that amount added to what we have here. Is that in, in accordance with the?
Yeah, I mean, and like I said, I mean, I mean, I was adamant about that. That was my reason why, hey, I was worried. Yeah, and, and, but I think that's right. I mean, I think that, that there are things that we could have done. You know, unfortunately, I, I, I blame myself for not agendizing it. You know, I did talk to some council members about how it's worked in the past. And, you know, maybe don't even like to give a research, but I do believe in the past, since last six years, there did one instance where we rolled it over, so it hasn't happened. So that's, that's the reason why, uh, you know, I asked for it to be agendized today, uh, because that was my understanding that we would. Essentially you have to double, so whoever you want to double it, that's, that's what the intention was.
Well, again, I don't, for those who didn't spend any of that money, then it would be doubled. For those like, I, you know, I went to Olivia California Cities, I use some of the travel district. For, I should be reduced, I, I shouldn't roll over.
I don't know, me too. I hear five hundred options.
Vice Mayor? Mr. Ishwood, do you have any questions?
Yeah, I think just, uh, from my experience, I can agree with Mr. Wanda. I think that's what I understood too of it. It's that we'll come back with an, uh, an amendment, if you will, or we can, it's over an hour, but we want to think of it. But really tonight was the night I said we want to double, but it wouldn't happen in this fiscal year. So the last fiscal year is done. Uh, so if I endorse the component of the double, catch up force, I'm just saying is, I want to be cautious that we don't make a motion that tells city staff how to double it. Rather, if we just want to double, let, let the city staff follow the process we're doing this year.
And I would go.
But I would disagree that we shouldn't just double.
No, yeah, whatever, whatever the balance was, whatever the balance, because I went to a seminar.
I'm gonna make clarity, because if you're asking to, to, to carry over any balance, did you mean the travel or does the community improvement district?
I have, I said overs.
And I'm not saying carry it over. What I'm saying is, what was the balance on June thirtieth in each category for each council member? And then the next proposal would be to modify the budget for, uh, each item for each district to reflect an increase in this amount from what those remain from.
Understood. Given the opportunity, I need to remind council that any unspent funds and illa-travel are not, I don't know how to, because that balance doesn't necessarily need to be carried over unless city manager gives the guidance with council approval to carry whatever the balance is.
We had a, we, but we can modify a budget.
A hundred percent, yes.
And that's in essence what we're doing, is that correct?
Yes, so we'll sit down and we'll go back and look at what were the balance totals for both of those accounts as a last fiscal year. And then we will take those dollar amounts for each of you, the remaining, whatever that remainder is, and add it to what these are, bring it back to you. So you will see what those amounts are as a proposed budget amendment for this year.
Yeah.
Right, and then I go for the, there's council members here who don't want to do that, then they can have that option to say, you know what, I'll just keep it as it is. I mean, that, yeah, that's up to them. So if there's a council member right now says, you know what, I'll just move forward with what's here, that's their option. But I'm, I'm one that wants to be able to get the rule.
We're not calling it law. Amended budget adjustments, is that better? Diego?
Oh, sorry.
Called amended budget adjustment.
You can do that, yes.
Everybody, is that okay with that? Okay. Good. Any question? Seeing none, we're not gonna have any public comment on this matter, I guess. Is that right, Mr. Bender? No public comment on it?
Okay.
Okay. Brian, anything? We're gonna do this meeting next.
Uh, let me see, we have Kids Day, the twentieth of August from nine to noon at Zumo Park.
Good, thank you.
Christian?
Just one item, uh, these notices are at your seats. Uh, this is going in the August one utility bill. So you're getting a seat because you haven't received your utility bill yet. But, uh, the governor is on his second round of water conservation regulations. This one included, uh, he basically wants, um, commercial, industrial and institutional not to irrigate turf that basically has no purpose. Uh, but really the enforcement does fall on us and he said we may enforce. So the city will continue to enforce our water conservation ordinance, stage three that we are in. Uh, we will monitor this, but we are not gonna go in hard and heavy and, uh, require that they stop watering it. But if we do receive complaints, we will, uh, address it with the businesses as they come. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Miller?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I don't have anything tonight.
Thank you. Diego?
I don't have anything.
Right, Josh?
Very quickly, ARPA, uh, your council has provided information to myself, Jason Golding. We've been putting that, uh, material together. I've also had individual conversations with a number of your council members associated with ARPA and, um, an item that showed up on three or four of your council members. It may or may not be going forward, so I've been dragging my feet a little bit to wait and see what happens with that. With that said, there are a couple of time sensitive projects. Uh, Councilmember Segala had, and I had a conversation last week. Uh, Vice Mayor Sarah and I had a conversation. So we do plan on bringing those more time sensitive projects forward to your council for consideration, potentially at the next, at, at, at Mass in September.
And in the fashion that we're dealing with this, we could go ahead and approve those selected items and reduce the amount.
Yes.
On the time sensitive.
Yes, indeed, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you, that's all.
Christian? Yeah, nothing's happening, no. City manager asked me to give you a quick update on the Mulcay Park playground equipment. As you know, we had a fire there. We're working with our insurance adjusters. Um, the good news is, is that we, they determined that forty to fifty percent, and Brian, correct me if I'm wrong, our south, of that playground equipment is salvageable. Uh, we have a hundred and seventy five thousand dollar, um, uh, policy on that with a twenty five thousand dollar deductible. So the good news is we think that, um, those, uh, that cost will be absorbed through that insurance, um, claim. And, um, the equipment has been fenced and the, uh, park's manager is working to get, um, that equipment replaced.
Cameron?
I have nothing.
What about the nine eleven blood drive? That, uh.
I have nothing. I have any to say, so.
Well, that's, uh, that's.
Down here, there you go.
Mr. Mayor, Jason Bender, co-chair, nine eleven blood drive. What questions do you have, sir?
I, I just wanted the public to know and to give you about, um, my wife's president of Rotary, so I.
I haven't been to a meeting, so I wasn't aware of that. Thank you, sir.
Anyway, I'm giving you time, so.
Oh, yes, uh, nine eleven is our blood drive. Uh, I believe we're doing six to AM to six PM this year. Uh, Kiwanis should be serving pancakes. Uh, we'll be having, um, I believe K-jug will be there, uh, as, serving that music. Uh, River Valley Church, I believe, provides a dinner. We haven't decided, heard yet what they're gonna do, whether it's spaghetti or chicken. Uh, all are welcome, all are needed. Uh, our, our blood center desperately needs blood. Uh, so please come donate. Uh, I believe the first hundred, first time donors, uh, will receive a, a Galaxy Theater pass. And I believe we also are working on, uh, fair entry tickets. And I haven't heard a number on that, but I, I, normally it's a very high number. So if you come, you'll get free entry to the fair in your coupon packet. And I have seen a preview for the T-shirt this year. It's a wonderful T-shirt. It's probably the best T-shirt we've ever done. You should come just for the T-shirt to donate. Thank you.
Doesn't matter.
I'd like to help support in, uh, the resolution for the Call family, who was found in the market. They're closing or they, they have sold it, you know, effectively in September after eight years. But it's, but it's all about this district, but I bring you up because, uh, Steve Goll and I grew up together. I think actually something beyond a proclamation or what this community, what they have done for this community as well as they were the driving force during very long Chinese commercials, I say, that's, that's because of them.
I think we can have support for a proclamation, appropriate proclamation, whatever.
If it's.
We can have your.
Read all of the, did the information provided, this is.
Absolutely. Mr. Sagal?
One issue, it's, I initially talked to Brian and I mentioned earlier, AYSO and Teler Yu soccer league are beginning soon, next couple of weeks. It's great to know there's about seventeen hundred kids that are going to be playing and their families. And so one of the things that came up in discussions, I did see the letter to Mr. Harold and the response from city manager and Mr. Click and Brian on the issue, and I just wanted to focus on the parking issue. Because it does create, I've had, I've been out there with, you know, my girlfriend's kids playing soccer and stuff. And so I wanted to make sure that, that we could do something to anticipate. I did have a good conversation with Brian. They've been working out schedules in terms of making sure that you don't have seventeen hundred kids at one time. I know that the kids that I know are playing on Sunday evenings, so that helps with these. But there's still going to be some issues in, on Saturdays. And so what I wanted the council, I wanted to ask the council was to agendize at the next meeting a discussion that could empower the department to try to address the issue if they become an issue, sort of in anticipation. One of the ideas that I talked to Brian about was that through the Utility County Regional Transit Agency and transit, their operator, we can rent a thirty-two foot bus to shuttle families between the Ag Center, if you're open to allowing people to park there in the actual soccer complex that, you know, they help buy. And it's sixty dollars, about sixty dollars an hour to run a bus. So Brian, Jason, and I'm sure Mark had all worked hard to assure it doesn't become an issue. But I know from past experiences that people park up across the street, along the fence of the airport. They try to park at the golf course, which, you know, they're making sure they don't. And so in anticipation of that, we're hoping and I have confidence that, that it will work out. But in case it doesn't, I might be able to have that option for the staff to be able to, to see if a shuttle would be the best way to address that. I know there will be striping, there will be striping, the party like is, you know, you have stripes where you get the two cars in it and it kind of limited the parking spots. So I know they're trying to address it, but I wanted to see if I could get the council to have it on the agenda for the next meeting on the sixteenth, to see if there may be an issue not to empower the department to try to address that. That, what I think is a public safety issue. And I did talk to Mr. Harold about it and at least we can discuss it and talk about it.
If I can ask Mr. Brad.
Brian, I'm afraid you, Melissa, would you pull up the image of the parking lot? Ryan, you can speak to this, this slide and then the next slide.
Yeah, so the slide that is before you, that is the, the main parking. You see those are usually, that's fields one through four that are right there. What happened last year is we had previous meetings with AYSO, the board and Teler Yu Soccer. As the leagues began to play and a week before, the board from AYSO kind of disbanded. So during those meetings, Jake and I had worked out the timeframe and when the two different groups could come in. And we got to keep in mind, last year was the first year we had both groups using the same complex on the same day. So that was kind of the, the issue. But what happened was when the board disbanded, they didn't follow our criteria as far as the schedules were supposed to be go. So they had teams playing back to back, back to back, back to back in both organizations. So in meeting with them this year and starting two months ago, we've decided to kind of, to spread out their schedules. We have, we are also using field five, which is on the next slide. Last year, they did not use field five, which you see is at the very top there, and there's additional parking in that same area. So last year, field five wasn't used, so no, they did not use that additional parking. That's right there. So this year, the whole complex will be used. We already have a schedule set with both organizations. We do, we're, we're getting their schedules as they come in. Our plan is to add three hundred and sixty-six parking stalls out there. This will be done by Anderson Striping. Last year, it was done by Anderson Striping came in at the end, but it was our, our parks guys that went out there and striped it. So this year, through KRC, this is the design that they came up with. So we feel that there is significant parking. But as you know, and if you've been to many events, people are going to park where they want to park. And that's just logistics of the, of the complex. So, you know, both organizations, one starts the twenty-seventh, the other one starts about two weeks later. And with Mr. Sagal and I talking today, it is my plan and I would like to see it maybe wait about three or four weeks and see how this lines up this year and then maybe see after that where, where we can move forward. I believe there's enough parking, three hundred and sixty-six parking stalls there. We just got to hope that people use them in the correct manner.
And council, I think what I would also say to you is this is that I agree with Brian saying, certainly if council wants us to bring it back, we're happy to do that. But from my perspective, I think it makes sense to implement this plan and see how it works. I think what we also can do is have a further conversation with the leagues and encourage the leagues to do what they can do themselves. In other words, if they're concerned about parking, they can also look at carpooling, for example. That's something that's completely within their control, that doesn't require a city to do anything. Alternatively, if that's not something they're willing to look at, they can certainly approach the agri center and talk to them about creating a, a shuttle system and they could pay for that themselves rather than asking the pounds, the taxpayers to pay for a shuttle service. So certainly if council wants us to bring them back, we will do that. If you want us to find ways to pay for that, we will do that. But I think perhaps a better approach, given what Brian has said, is let us implement the plan, let us see how it works. Allow us to talk to the leads and explain to them the concerns that council has regarding parking and ask them to come up with the ideas that they're going to implement to try to help solve the problem that they create. And then if that doesn't work, then we can always come back to you and say, here's some other ideas that we have. That would be our recommendation.
Well, that kind of answered the questions I was starting to ask was, it would seem like, I mean, we've got parks a wrecked apartment. We, we've got these leagues out there. I, I don't, and I appreciate what you're saying, that you've been out there, there's been a problem. But not every problem is, is for the city council to weigh in on and try to resolve. I would hope between the leagues and what you're trying to do, find a way to resolve. And if they need, as you've indicated, help from the International Amber Center, they can do that. But I don't know what works there. So I, I, I'm inclined to follow what has now been presented as opposed to putting it on our agenda. Vice Mayor?
I think that sounds like a really good idea to, to be proactive and working with the league. As they've already addressed some of the issues with this plan, taking the license of field five and additional parking spaces, let's see what happens. If it continues to be an issue, then I think the agri center is a, a great resource to, I mean, they support our community in every way they can.
Mr. Shwood?
Councilman Sagal, I think if you're bringing this up, that we just kind of got the staff before it. And we got the whole component from it is, is, I think is the mayor outlined and what staff did is, is what I've seen is a solutions approach. So if the problem presents that was just initiated to us, the city staff will initiate solutions, you know, or participate with that. So I don't, I don't necessarily think that a council action is due at this time because the city manager had said, we want to do this. We can help nurture this issue. And if some action point presents itself, then it'll come to us already, so I'm good.
Anything else you want to add, Mr. Harold? Okay, we'll leave, we'll, we'll see what happens. We'll leave it off the agenda at this point. Anything else? I, Mr. Shwood, if we've covered anything you wish to discuss on future agenda?
I have nothing, sir.
No, I have none. That being said, we've covered everything. I thought I was going to make you a nine twenty-five estimate, but again, you're positive. Needing a adjournment?